Good evening and welcome. I am calling to order this meeting of the Arlington Select Board on Monday, May 8th, 2023. I am Select Board Chair Eric Helmoth. Tonight's meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format consistent with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, signed into law on March 29th, 2023, which further extends certain COVID-19 measures regarding remote participation in public meetings until March 31st, 2025. Before we begin, please note the following. First, this meeting is being conducted in the Select Board chambers and over Zoom. It is being recorded and simultaneously broadcast on ACMI. Second, persons wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. Persons participating by Zoom are reminded that you may be visible to others, and if you wish to participate, we ask you to provide your full name in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. Third, all participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. Both Zoom participants and persons watching on APCMI can follow the posted agenda materials found on the town's website, specifically the Select Board Agendas and Minutes page. Let's see how much of the town's business we can get done tonight. Since all Select Board members are present physically, we will take all votes by voice unless required by law, otherwise. Thank you very much. So, the second item is an update on National Grid response to the letter regarding gas leaks. Mr. Decorse.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am going to recuse myself from this discussion due to my legal work for National Grid.
Thank you, sir. Enjoy your timeout.
Thank you.
And who do we have this evening addressing the updates?
Ms. Boland reached out to me this morning that she would be here, but I don't see any attendees yet.
And they were planning to join remotely? Okay. Okay, well, Steve may have a short break for now, so let's go ahead and call him back, and I'll move that item later. Maybe should have checked that before we sent him out.
Yeah, you can come.
Steve will be getting his exercise tonight. I mean, Mr. Decorse. Okay, so we'll postpone that for a few minutes. And updated resolution language for Article 64. So the board has before them some language that the sponsors submitted in response, I think in good faith, to some of the concerns that were raised at the Warren Article hearing. And I wanted to give the board an opportunity to comment on those, and if it so chose...
Please bring the meeting to order. If anyone wants to make a motion to...
We're here, we're ready to vote.
The voting system is operational.
...support that language, we certainly entertain that. Any discussion, motions?
My brain's not working. What were the concerns? Do we have a rough idea?
Well, so, in fact, it was just my typical issue with resolutions, meaning that in...
Okay, got it.
Yeah, so, and I appreciate what they are trying to do here, me and Ann. I had a discussion with one of the proponents, me and Ann, and I said that myself, along with, you know, the chair, me and Ann, may at some point get in touch with them to help me navigate the state waters, you know, because essentially, a lot of stuff that they want to do needs to happen at the state level, me and Ann. I'm fully on board with what they want to do, but let's try to really make something happen as close as it could to a resolution, you know, so that's it.
Okay. And, Mr. Chairman, are you just looking for an approval of the updated resolution?
Yes, sorry, and the agenda, I couldn't have been clearer on that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, so, on a motion to approve by Mr. Hurd and seconded by Mr. Decorse, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A four-two-zero vote. All right. Next, we have the consent agenda. We have minutes of meetings, February 13th and 16th, and April 24th and May 1st of this year. We have four outdoor restaurant and retail permit applications: Roast a Granola, The Heights Pub, Sugokutina, and Trist. We have a request for the annual Greek festival, three-day special one-day beer and wine license, and a one-way designation of Appleton Place. We request for a special one-day all-alcohol license at Robinson Memorial Town Hall by Jamie Fisher, and another one at Rodeo and Robbins House for a private event by Ellen Lawton. The details of all this are found in the Select Board Agendas and Minutes page and in the Members' Novus Agenda. Do we have any discussion or a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Diggins.
So, I am interested in how we resolve the Roast a Granola request, you know. I'm on board with it, you know, but I do feel that by understanding how we resolve and how we approach it, we can perhaps come up with what I would call a grand unification parking policy, you know, or set of principles, because I think it was interesting, you know, this was an interesting case, and people who are on one side of the parking issue in one set of circumstances found themselves on the other side in this set of circumstances, you know. I get a lot of talking to, from some business owners in East Arlington about my stance on parking, and it was interesting to see that they felt that this was okay, you know, and I told them I'd like to talk with you in order to understand, on what circumstances should we do something.
You take it way farther.
You know, and so, you know, we don't have to have that conversation now, but I would like it at some point, we could have a deeper conversation about how we resolve this and see how it might apply in other circumstances, because I think there is some real lessons to be learned from how we approach this that can apply, you know, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? A motion, once again, by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Decorse. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A four-to-zero vote.
It felt like we were all going to sit there.
Yeah. All right, for approval, Arlington Adult Spring and Summer Softball League lawn sign through May 31st, 2023. Do we have Mr. Zimmerman? Please come to the microphone and introduce yourself, and tell us about this application.
Thank you for giving us an opportunity to talk. My name's Ken Zimmerman, and I've got my associate Ed with me as well, Ed Young. So, Arlington town has for many, many years given the opportunity for men and women to play softball in the spring and summer. Over the years, there has been a decline in participation, particularly on the men of a certain age. We went from eight teams to six to four to two. The league is in risk of folding entirely, which would not afford the opportunity anymore for folks to play. We have run booths at Town Hall, we've used the lists that we've had from AYBSA and so on, but what we find again and again are folks, and I'd even ask you non-ritorically, do you know that there is a men's softball league in Arlington? People tend to say, no, I didn't know about that. So, we would like to use the lowest-hanging fruit marketing that we can, which is to put lawn signs in high-visibility areas, simply saying that we have an Arlington Men's and Women's Softball League. We are open for registration, and we would love to have you participate. We are open to all skill levels, all levels of competitive interest. The risk is that we're going to fold, that we won't be able to support even another... We should be playing now. We're not playing now. We are still trying to shake the trees and get players, and we are hoping that this particular marketing tool will get us 10, 15, 12 players?
Great.
Would be wonderful.
Great, thank you. And just a clarifying question from the materials that were submitted to us. In order for us to approve that, we need to approve a specific list of locations. So, you mentioned Thorndike Field near the bike path, the median by Starbucks in the center, Summer Street and Mill, somewhere near Bracket School, the water tower, near the police station, and by the hockey rink.
Yeah, by Row, yeah.
Yeah, and were those, is that an exhaustive list of where you intend to...
So, we were planning on getting five signs, so those are five locations. Those all seem to cover, you know, high-traffic areas on the bike path where we would get, you know, families, parents who would see the signs, that list.
Ed, did anything, was anything missing from that list?
So, that would be terrific.
Great, thank you very much. And before I return to my colleagues, a question for the town manager and possibly Attorney Heim. I just want to make sure that we have jurisdiction to give the approval for those locations, and I think some of it will depend exactly where. So, I'm happy to refer this, you know, administratively to the appropriate, either the Select Board Office or the town manager for the exact placement, but do either of you have any input on that question?
So, Mr....
Yes, please, Attorney Heim.
Chair, if I may.
Yes.
So, generally, you have...
Recording in progress.
Generally, you have authority over everything in the public way, and authority alongside the town manager with respect to late town buildings. The only thing that might require some supplemental approval is something that's on school property.
Okay. And what about the water tower? Is that MWA property, or is that a sufficient public way for us to just approve?
My strong guess is going to be that wherever you're talking about putting the signage is probably within the layout of the public way, such that I wouldn't have a concern. There's probably some of that property, I'd have to look at the deeds, I don't know if that's the town's property or the MWA's property in terms of the actual, like, center where the tower is, but there's going to be enough of the public way layout that we can...
Terrific.
Mr. Hurd.
Motion to approve. I know, in the water tower, we place flags, so I'm confident that's a good spot. I actually think a good spot, too, is the entrance to the Ed Burns Arena. We have people coming in, kids play in the big field, play buck.
Right.
So, I think that's kind of a target. The answer, as a coach of two baseball teams, to your question is, no, I did not know we had a men's softball league. I don't know if you accept middle-aged guys that have never played softball before...
Well, I stand before you.
What days do you play?
Weekdays. And you may have seen us, but we're at Buzzel Field. There's a co-ed, there's a women's team, there's a co-ed team in the fall, and a men's and women's team in the spring and summer, and it's almost all at Buzzel. We may get some use of the new Hurd Field, but mostly for this year.
Is it at night?
Seven o'clock, and then we play an 8:30 game.
Yep.
Yeah, nothing more fun than playing under the lights on a summer day with your friends.
Yep.
Chairman, join us.
Very much.
I'm interested, I'm interested.
Oh, that's great, well, there you go.
Happy to approve. Glad to be able to support this.
And Mr. Hurd, were you adding authorized locations to your motion of the Burns Arena?
If you have a sign for it, I think that's a good spot.
So, I think we have either the ACAP, isn't there something on that, it may not have been specific enough to rule out, the Ed Burns, I think I might have suggested Summer Street...
You did.
...by ACAP. So, that is, that is the same piece of land, yeah.
Yes, quite so, yeah.
Mr. Decorse. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll second Mr. Hurd's motion. Just a couple of questions, Mr. Zimmerman. On the sign-ups, is this, anything done through the Recreation Department, or is it directly through your organization on the sign-up?
So, the Recreation Department helps us with respect to lights, insurance, and other things, but we operate it as an independent group.
Okay.
So, registration would be done through some volunteer administrators.
Okay. And just to Mr. Helmoth's point on locations, I think he had seven or eight in the application, maybe we're talking about five...
We're only looking...
...in total.
Yeah.
And as I jot it down, you did have the hockey rink. Bracket School concerned me a little bit, just because that might be a school property, but I don't know if you're looking for more specificity on that, but I, just pulling from your list, and you tell us if it's acceptable. I had Thorndike, Starbucks, the median in the center, Summer and Mill, the water tower, and by the Ed Burns Arena. Is that acceptable for the five locations?
That would be wonderful.
Okay, so if I could amend Mr. Hurd's motion, just to add those as part of my second.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, I think that's probably wise with bracket being, and that's close to the water tower.
Yeah, and I certainly didn't mean to imply bracket property, but by bracket, you've got the field there, the Robbins Farm field there.
Attorney Heim.
Mr. Chair, can I ask an important legal question?
You may indeed.
Do you have to be an Arlington resident?
We cater almost entirely to Arlington, but when we are, honestly, when we are as desperate as we've been with teams folding, we are probably 90, upwards of high 90% Arlington men and women.
See, this focuses...
I'm actually going to suggest the guy in the back of the room. He looks like a good softball player.
Attorney Heim.
Thank you, Attorney Heim. Really, folks, this is the benefit of having top-rate legal consultation for the town.
But, I'm sorry, but you cannot wear a Yankees hat to the game. That is a rule.
From where I'm standing, you all look like ballplayers.
Any further discussion? And a motion by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Decorse, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Four-nothing vote. Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman, and good luck this summer. Thank you for your efforts. Next, item 10, appointment to the Conservation Commission, Brian McBride. Hello there, Mr. Hurd. We meet at last in person. Please come to the microphone and introduce yourself, and if you would, Mr. McBride, say a few words about your interest in serving.
I'm sorry, could you say...
Say a few words about your interest in serving.
Okay, so I've been interested in outdoors since I was a kid, growing up in Berkshire County. I'm interested in waterways and preservation of our natural resources, since I worked for a decade or so in the chemical industry selling products that cleaned up water. Since I retired about a year ago, I've been trying to get involved in town activities and join the Open Space Committee with your support a year or so ago, and I've been attending the Conservation Commission meetings for about four or five of the meetings, and the Commission has been very helpful and kind of given me an idea of what the lay of the land was and the responsibilities were. So, I'm very excited about the opportunity and happy to answer any specific questions, of course.
Thank you, sir, and I've enjoyed some of the discussions we've had in recent and recent weeks on a couple of issues, and I'm glad that you want to be involved. Any discussions or motions from the colleagues?
Motion to...
Any discussion? All right, and a motion by Mr. Diggins, and seconded by Mr. Decorse. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Four-nothing vote.
Appreciate it.
Item 11, traffic rules and orders, other business, discussion and vote removal of taxicab stands to town. I believe that Mr. Feeney comes to the plate, to continue the metaphor. Thank you very much. Thank you. I want to say that I suggest, I know that Mr. Feeney's been working on this for a while, but I suggested this item tonight in connection with the approval of the outdoor restaurant and retail permit applications, because in some locations, including that and The Heights, it does involve these parklets, which are clearly very popular and economically beneficial, do take away some street parking, and so we've been talking for some time about some unused spaces, or some unused taxicab spaces. So, Mr. Feeney, of course, unsurprisingly, was already prepared for this and brought this to us with the test material. So, Mr. Feeney, if you want to give a summary of what you propose, and we can have a discussion and potentially a vote.
Sure. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. It did seem timely, given the applications that were before you, folks, for sort of outdoor seating and things that may impact parking in our business districts, and, you know, in particular in The Heights, those parking spots exclusively reserved for taxicabs are really in a prime spot, as are those located in the Russell Common parking lot as the ones nearest Medford Street. So, given that, we have seen a precipitous decline in the licensing of taxis or Hackney Carriage licensees, as we call them locally. I think in 2020, I believe we licensed two individuals, and then that was down to one individual in 2021, and then, I think, last year, someone may have trickled in mid-year, but beyond that, we have seen no activity or had any requests here in 2023. And I confirmed as of today with the Traffic and Parking Unit over at APD that, you know, at least anecdotally, the parking control officers have not witnessed a taxicab in any period of time that they can remember. So, with that, it seems timely. Obviously, the existing traffic rules and orders, though they haven't been amended, they do list, you know, at least 26 taxicab stand locations. That clearly has been dwindling over time as various projects have been completed, so it seemed like an appropriate time to potentially codify all those changes from years gone by, sort of in one fell swoop. So, before you this evening is something that, you know, if voted upon favorably, would obviously be very easy to execute, because it is just the removal of existing signs, and at least in The Heights, we would put up signs consistent with what the existing parking regulations are in that corridor. So, I don't think I have much else to add, but thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Decorse. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Feeney. I'll move that the board votes to remove the taxicab stands from our traffic rules and orders as laid out in the memo from Mr. Feeney, and if I could, I'd like to thank him for the follow-up earlier this year when he was at the meeting, but I also want to thank the shopper in Arlington Heights who brought my attention to the cab spaces in front of the bus station in Arlington Heights, and there was further work that Mr. Feeney did, and appreciate that. And if I could digress just for a moment, it is rather nostalgic for me, because growing up in town, my uncle was a cab driver who was up The Heights, and the five spots that you see on Park Ave, at 30 Park Ave, it was back in the day, in the 70s, 60, 70, 70s, when I was young, you could see seven or eight cabs lined up from Park Ave, from the corner of Park Ave Extension and Mass Ave, all the way up to the top of the bridge, over what was then the railroad tracks. And, of course, times have changed, and it's not necessary, but if people were wondering where those five cab spots were coming from, those were used at one time, but certainly an appropriate time to remove them, and thank you for bringing this to our attention.
I will add, things have changed somewhat drastically, and it wasn't but eight years ago, we were still licensing between 17 and 25 carriages a year, so things have changed rather precipitously.
Mr. Hurd.
I'll second the motion. I was on TAC when we originally moved the parking spaces, I think around 2016, to create space for meters, and there was a lot of pushback at that time, because there were still a fair amount of taxis at the time. Obviously, my office is right now at the center, so I walk through there every day, and I don't remember the last time I saw a taxi there, and so it's certainly, I think, time. And I assume that if a taxi were to sit there at a meter, they could pay the meter, right?
Right, so the bylaw changes outlined in the memo...
Yep.
...remove the requirement for them to necessarily be parked in a designated taxicab stand.
Yes, yep.
So that, you know, if one did exist, they could stand and obey or abide by the existing parking regulations, I suppose.
Yeah, I think there's plenty of parking for them to find a spot, but again, I, there was a time, not too long ago, where there were a fair amount of taxis in and out of the center, but you just don't see them anymore, so...
I'm fine with this, of course. Thank you.
Good.
And I like the precipitous decline language, too. That really put me on board.
Well, it's the end of an era, but the beginning of a new one. So, thank you very much, Mr. Feeney. On a motion by Mr. Decorse and a seconded by Mr. Hurd, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four-nothing vote. Item 12, correspondence received, concerns regarding high school parking by Liz Reisberg. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to receive and send this to TAC. I'll have a conversation with the chair about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, on a motion by Mr. Higgins, Diggins to receive and refer, and seconded by Mr. Hurd, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And four-nothing vote. Thanks to my very observant vice chair, we do need to loop back around to item 2. Ms. Mar, do we have speakers?
Yes.
All right, so we'll go back to item 2, update on National Grid response to a letter regarding gas leaks.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes. Thank you. All right, so, Ms. Mar, if you'd bring up the presenters?
Yep. Ms. Boland will be joining us in just a second.
Hi, I'm sorry that I'm late. A little bit of a time destroying computer problem.
No problem.
So, I just want to report back on March 13th...
I'm sorry, would you just talk about introducing yourself, please?
Oh, okay. My name is Ann Boland. I'm with the Gas Leaks Task Force, and I'm reporting back from when we had the, we reported to the Select Board on March 13th, and the Select Board passed a resolution at the request of the Gas Leaks Task Force, the resolution to send to National Grid to fix 14 SEIs, significant environmental impact leaks. And I'm here tonight to report follow-up to our resolution. National Grid sent their reply to our resolution on March 28th. They wrote that they've completed the repair of two of the leaks, one on Rhine Cliff Street and the other on Joyce Road. They reclassified six of the leaks as no longer large extent leaks, and one leak is reclassified as a grade-two leak. Per regulation, a grade-two leak must be repaired within a year of the classification. Their plan for the remaining five SEIs was that they will be repaired in 2023 or eliminated by main replacement in 2024. So, in light of this, we investigated five of the leaks they reported as repaired or reclassified. We first tested the leak at Joyce Road, which was recorded as repaired. Our meter registered gas over a large extent at the intersection of Joyce and Ivy Circle. We spoke with a resident of the street who said there have been several trees lost in this location, as well as trees dying on their neighbor's property. She also said she's unable to keep her front windows open because of the gas smell. Based on our testing, this leak has not been adequately repaired. Russell Street had a leak listed as reclassified. We again were able to detect gas over an extended area, and we think that maybe this is really still an SEI, which is probably something we'll need to go back to National Grid about. We were, then we went to Medford Street, where there was an SEI that is now reclassified as a grade-three leak. We did not detect gas in a large area of this location, but we did measure a small amount of gas buildup in a PVC pipe. This report, this pipe came up next to utility pole. This buildup of gas in an enclosed area can be dangerous, so we called National Grid to report it. The leak on Rhine Cliff Street was recorded as repaired, and we did detect a little gas, but not a large extent. So, we could not definitively detect leaking in the location by the high school, which has been downgraded to a grade-three leak. However, a contractor who's been working across from the school for about a year said that he smells gas off and on at the intersection of Mass Ave and Lachland Avenue. Of the remaining five leaks, National Grid has just requested permits to repair four of them within the next four months, few months. So, we were told by National Grid that this action on these leaks is a direct result of the Select Board resolution. The data we receive on gas leaks is somewhat behind. The SEIs in the resolution are based on older data. Newer data from the fourth quarter of 2022 reported 21 SEIs in Arlington. Sadly, the gas leaks in Arlington are an ongoing problem. Gas Leaks Task Force wants National Grid to focus, as well as focusing on the required grade-one and grade-two leaks, we'd like the National Grid to focus on these large-scale gas leaks, because that is best for the environment. Going to these locations to measure gas leaks was eye-opening for us. Because of this, we're planning a gas leak safari for members of the Select Board, legislatures, and members of other boards and committees. We'll go to some of these gas leak locations and explore the levels of gas, odor of gas, examine the health of the trees and the grass. So, once we make our plans, we'll send invitations, if anybody would like to do that. And then we'd like to thank the Select Board for their action on Arlington's SEIs, and we will continue to work on this issue.
Fantastic. Thank you very, very much for your diligence, for your work. This is a terrifically helpful report. I'm glad to see the progress, but it's clear that more needs to be done. I would be very interested in going on the tour.
Okay.
So, we look forward to that as well. So, any discussion for the...
Yeah, thank you. So, Ms. Boland, what did you say that they said was in response to the Select Board's resolution?
What was the date that they got back to us?
No, no, you said that there was an action that they took that was in response to our resolution.
Oh, yeah, they had just, you know, the period for submitting... ended a few weeks back, and they requested permits for four of those five large scale gas leaks. And they said that was, in their letter, they said that they would work with the town engineering department to get some of those those leaks fixed. So that was a direct action.
A direct action linked to what?
Linked to the resolution.
Okay.
I, I don't have the letter in front of me that they sent with the report of all the gas leaks, but they, in it, they said that they were going to work with the town engineering department and that they would work at repairing those five unrepaired, that what they thought were the five unrepaired gas leaks.
So what's what's going to happen with the leaks that they say are fixed and we're saying that they're not?
Well, that's a good question. We haven't really had a meeting to discuss that since we went out in the field. Some of us went out in the field to to test those. So I think that that's going to be our next, we're just going to, we're going to have to come up with an action. They, you know, they do have a representative that we can contact, who they told us about in that letter. So we can contact that person. We're going to, we're going to have to come up with a plan.
Okay, that's fine. Well, yeah, let's keep, let's keep working on it, you know. So, so, great, I really appreciate your efforts on this, and, and, yeah, let's keep working on it. Not sure I'm going to go on the safari, but I'll help out in other ways, you know, so, and always feel free to reach out to me, email, phone, whatever, okay?
Okay, thanks, Len.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Do we get a motion?
Yeah, motion received.
Motion to receive?
Second, Captain. Motion received by Mr. Hurd and Mr. Diggins. Any discussion? Welcome, Mrs. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mahan, did you want to engage on this particular item before we finish it up? We were on, we finished everything, but we're back to item two, the speaker, the gas leaks.
No, I apologize. I was on an expedite all day. I had 7:30 in my head, and I apologize to everyone
Glad to see you.
for being late. Thank you.
So a motion by Mr. Hurd and second by Mr. Diggins, this is a motion to receive. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There's a four, nothing vote. Mr. Decorsy. All right, that leaves new business. Ms. Mar.
No new business, thank you.
Attorney Hyatt.
No new business, thank you.
Mr. Poehler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to add new business. I've become aware that there was some concern about some remarks I made at town meeting regarding civil service. So I would just like to say that I'd like to apologize if I did not express myself clearly about how the town hires veterans and the impact of moving away from an absolute preference for veterans under civil service. I know that some of our best employees here in town and that I've worked with in other places are veterans, and their experience in the military will often make them very attractive candidates to consider. We are seeking to diversify the department and a move away from the restrictions of civil service. Veteran status warrants strong consideration for a candidate, but it should not be the only consideration. That is my position, and that is the chief's. And in fact, within the police department, there's a lot of conversation about changing our police departments from having a warrior mentality to a guardian mentality. And in that regard, I think it's important that there are sometimes people coming out of a military background who want to maintain a warrior mentality, and if there are other candidates that are equally qualified, I think we should have the ability to hire those other candidates. I would also say that this has been the position in town since 2011, when we changed the hiring status of our DPW workers and took them out of the civil service process. We still do hire veterans in DPW, but we don't give them an automatic preference. So if my previous remarks caused any discomfort or confusion, I am sorry for that, and I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other new business, Mr. Poehler? Thank you, sir. Mrs. Mahan?
Well, that's quite a segue to follow into. And when's the apology for insulting the police department, and who are these warriors that we have?
I'm wondering what you mean about insulting the police department, because I don't believe I did insult the police department.
You just said that the police department has warriors on it, and they have a warrior mentality. I'd like to know who you're referencing. Similarly, if I said, you know, why didn't somebody get a job who was qualified, unfortunately was a woman, and has been doing your job for two years, and the person who got it was a former student of yours, which I don't know if that happened in Amherst, but who are these warriors?
What I said was that the police department itself has conversations all the time about trying to be a department not of warriors but of guardians. That's, if you ask any of the police officers, the training they've gone through, the conversations they've had, all have to do with having a police department that is more community friendly and doesn't have a kind of warrior mentality. I think we've seen that in other parts of the country. It's not the kind of police department that we have here or want to have here. So it's not that I am bringing that up as an issue, the police themselves have brought that up. The other issue that you brought up about hiring the deputy manager, who was a former student of mine, and the implication that I did not hire somebody because she was a woman, I think has no basis in fact. I have long hired women. I have had many women work for me. My mother was the breadwinner in my family, so I resent and disagree with your insult to me about being sexist, so.
Well, I'm just going by the conversation you had with me when I queried you, how a certain individual got a job. And what I wanted to say with my remarks is something that I was told when I first got on the board, and I believe very strongly in, is that I represent the town of Arlington, as does the town manager, thankfully, just till July 28th. My words carry sometimes a louder voice, and I have to be cognizant of that. And I unfortunately have noticed, in my opinion, I'm speaking for myself alone, I've noticed a pattern where the town manager says negative detrimental remarks about Arlington, Massachusetts, and our employees, and, you know, I understand, you know, may have a friend in Minnesota or whatever, and then tries to buffer them by saying, but of course, I'm not saying that's happening here in Arlington. I strongly disagree. I'd love to see the staff development course or conversation that says, let's discuss Arlington's warrior mentality. I originally wanted my remarks to be the fact that you have insulted many veterans. I'm assuming you're not going to Memorial Day, because to have someone getting up representing the town who says the classic, oh, thank you for the sacrifice, serving in armed forces, which is a military, we can't thank you enough, we don't know how to, on the cusp of, we shouldn't be hiring these warriors and warrior mentality on the police force. And I would just ask you, besides not being at that event, that's my personal opinion, because I think that's false, just platitudes for you to, whatever remarks you might say in light of your feelings stated at town meeting, and again, here tonight, to talk about veterans, can't thank them enough, we don't know what we can do for them, but you certainly have proven otherwise. And I've become very concerned that you have gone to town meeting and represented views and policy decisions that you haven't even informed the board of. I do appreciate the email today regarding Poets Corner. That's something that I would expect to happen, so that I'm aware of it, but there have been other things that I'm hearing for the first time, including this conversation, what it's rooted in, which is the presentation that was given to me at the Select Board meeting regarding civil service, and your request for the opportunity to go to town meeting to talk about taking it out of civil service, where you incorrectly said Burlington got 300 candidates, they got 41. But there was nothing represented about how we're going to exclude, besmirge, and speak of the negative implication of anyone who's a veteran because of their warrior mentality. So I just hope going forward that that will stop, because, I mean, I've had people come up to me and said, where you were, the town manager was, had made this policy decision, had decided to do this, and I said, no. And that's something I, other town managers, and as you did today, the demonstration with Poets Corner, that's something that, you know, I should have been apprised of as a member of this board. And please, I beg you to please stop slamming and besmirching the town of Arlington in your final days, whether it's what happened to your friend in Minnesota, the warrior mentality remarks, because your remarks do carry great, great weight. And I've learned, even sometimes when I wanted to advocate for someone, I check with them first, because sometimes I found, find out in my zealousness to support them and advocate them, I might do just the opposite, because what I feel my words would be saying aren't exactly what they would be. And I think in the current times, we've learned about that. We need to really think about our words, and think about others, and think about their feelings, before we throw around. And you taught yourself. I didn't, I didn't know you were going to come right back at me with a good offense as a defense, but I, I really don't want to hear anything more from you on this, because I don't know who you're going to besmirge next before you leave on July 28th, so. And again, my apologies to my colleagues and Mr. Decorsy. I had an expedite, I had 7:30 in my head, and I apologize for that. And I'm assuming on the parklet that that was approved for Roaster Gnoa. Thank you, because I'd like to be registered in support of that. Thank you. Mr. Chair, if I might.
Yeah, Mr. Poehler, in just a moment, I think, you know, my colleague, and just to be clear for the public, that in new business, that the board does not demand amongst itself new items that are brought up, but, you know, there's nothing improper about about the question and answer here. I would, I do think that, you know, my colleague has raised a number of concerns about the town manager's performance. We oftentimes raise those concerns in private, and if we don't in public, when we evaluate the town manager, but given that a number of new concerns were just voiced, I want to give the manager an opportunity, if he chooses, to respond to any specific complaints, and then I would suggest a private conversation, I think, to resolve those concerns would be most appropriate.
And if I, if I could add to that, I mean, normally it's not a back and forth colloquy, and I was going to say, I will endeavor myself again to meet with the manager. I did come in Thursday morning, and he was not in the office, and I'll leave it at that. So, and I don't think it should be this back and forth. He's had his say, and I've had my say, and I've indicated I don't want to hear anything more from him in front of the microphone, because I am a bit fearful what will come next, and I think it should be done at a personal meeting between myself and the manager. But you're the chair, it's your call. We can keep going back and forth.
Thank you. I'd like to give the manager, you know, one more opportunity, give him some very specific concerns that were that were raised, and it's up to you, Mr. Poehler, if you prefer not to, that's fine.
The one thing I would like to say, Mrs. Mahan made reference to a comment I made about a friend of mine from Minnesota. I made those comments not besmirching the town, but telling the story about how he, as a young black man, had grown up in Minnesota, and when he and I were in law school together, we were just talking about being pulled over by the police. And I said, oh, I've been probably pulled over by the police three times in my life. And he told me of the dozens of times, as a young black man in Minnesota, that he'd been pulled over. I think that is an appropriate story to tell. It does not besmirch Arlington. It is a story about racism in America. It was a story that I told during our DEI training with our staff. If people think that is an insult to Arlington, then I think they have to do some thinking about what racism is in this country, how we all fit into it, and what different people's experiences have been. So I like working for Arlington. I think it's a great town. I like working with this board, all of you. I do not go around saying negative things about the town. And with that, I will conclude my remarks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Poehler. Mr. Hurd?
So I'll go to my easy new business first. Two Buzzles Field related, things that came up yesterday when I was at Buzzles Field. I like, I don't know, I guess to Trainheim, if this is something we could do, if there is any bylaws that prevent this, but the parking in what I believe is called the railroad lot right behind Buzzles Field, there's permit parking there, and my guess is that the people that use those permits, however many there are, they park there during the day, and they either work in town, because if you go there around 4:30, 5 o'clock, there's no cars there. And I guess my question is, is it advisable or legal for us to have a situation where it's permit parking until, say, 5 o'clock? And this might have arisen out of a ticket I got the other day, but that said, we've had, I try to be funny, but we've had a lot of discussions about parking on Summer Street and safety concerns with people crossing the street, because when you have a baseball field, baseball game, soccer game, parking's tight in that area, and people end up parking all throughout the neighborhoods there. So the parking, permit parking spaces right behind Buzzles seem like they're in high demand, and they're never really used by anyone. I don't see, at least, we could do a parking study, but I don't see any permit holders that are taking up those spots. So I'd like to at least look into whether or not we could have a, some sort of a program where it's permit parking till 5 o'clock. I don't know if that requires a specific permit for that lot or not, but.
So I'm happy to look into the issue further, but as a general rule, I would say that the board has the ability to set specific rules for specific lots. I'm not aware that we have done that in this scope, but clearly we have metered lots, we have spaces that are utilized differently, so I can look at, you know, how that might be structured for you.
Yeah. And then this is an easy one, I think. On the other side of Buzzles, I noticed yesterday, as you pull up to park, there's parking all along Buzzles Field on Summer Street, and there's a sign that is supposed to indicate no parking here to corner, and it says no parking anytime, which is a little confusing, because you could park beyond the sign. So I think that sign just needs to be, and this isn't really, I think that sign just needs to be changed to no parking here to corner. I did, I keep meaning to say this, and I was at the rink again yesterday, so I just, I wanted to, now that everyone knows I spend a lot of time at the Ed Burns Arena in the winter, and I did, as the season wrapped up, I was on the concrete yesterday, so the ice is gone, I did want to commend the recreation director, Joe Conley, JJ, the rink manager, who's been on the past couple of years, and his team. I've been in, I spend a lot of time in rinks all over Massachusetts, and the Arlington Rink is by far the cleanest, most well-run rink in the state that I've ever been in. And that includes a lot of very new rinks. And so it's certainly a credit, a testament to the staff there. And you'll go in there, and they're mopping the floors while you're there, so you know they do it, and it really is, I'm sure Mr. Decorsy remembers, there were times when the Arlington Rink was not the cleanest rink in Massachusetts. So I did, as we put a, close the book on one season, I do want to commend Joe Conley and JJ and their staff. I'll be brief. I think, Mr. Poehler, as you began your statement, I was happy to hear it, and I think it would have been wise to stop after a couple of sentences. And that's all I'm going to say on that. And I'm just going to say, in general, my feeling is that veterans make for excellent officers. I don't, I know many officers who are veterans in Arlington and in other jurisdictions, and I don't know any of them that have a quote unquote warrior mentality. And at times, I've mentioned specific officers by name, and I think they know who they are, that some of the veteran officers that I know are the most community oriented officers in all town, who actually use their time outside of when they're paid to serve the community and go to schools and, and help, you know, do events for children in town. And I think there's a lot, when I think of a veteran, I think of someone who knows duty, discipline, who, you know, police officers, as part of the job, when you, when you come on, you have to be the person that runs into danger. And I think there's a lot, when I think of a veteran, I think of someone who knows duty, discipline, who, um, you know, um, police officers, as part of the job, when you, when you come on, you have to be the person that runs into danger. And if you hire a veteran, you know somebody that, that will do that. And I don't see veterans or people in the military, of the people I know personally, are people that go to, go and shoot people on the battlefield. And the warrior mentality sounds like, to me, that's how I perceive it, and it's not how I see veterans, and I see immense value in veterans serving in any capacity in this town. And I see, think, um, I mean, I would support any comments that were disparaging to veterans.
Mr. Hurd? Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, I, um, coming to the period of time in the, in the year where the Verizon will be submitting its semi-annual double poll report to the Department of Public Utilities, Department of Public Utilities, and I am going to ask the chairman, or I spoke to the chairman, about putting an agenda item on soon about the double poll issue. I happened to be down by the Walgreens in East Arlington over the weekend, and the double poll on Adams Street, which was first raised at a board meeting here in November of 2020, then again in November 2021, is still a double poll, but in, in fact, it's in worse shape now, because the top of the original poll is secured in large part to the new poll with a rope. And it, it's secured at the bottom, but it's been more charring, and, again, this is a 90-day requirement, and it's, it's about two and a half years since, since we raised it at this meeting, not, not since it was a double poll. So, I, I've asked the chair if we can put an agenda item on, um, to discuss and, and perhaps take action. I know there are some requirements that Verizon has with other equipment that they place in town in terms of upkeep, in terms of some of their 5G equipment, and I think, um, we're to the point where, what else can we do? Every, every year or so, we raise this issue, and we're told there's going to be talk about it, there's going to be discussion with the other carriers who, who aren't doing anything, but meanwhile, this, this, this poll gets worse and worse, and the fact that they went out there again to change what was a secure, a more secure connection to a piece of rope, a little bit stronger than a piece of rope, but it's tied, um, I think is absolutely ridiculous. And, and I think it, it, again, to me, the fact that this has not been taken care of, even the numerous calls, and, and Mr. Poehler has reached out to Verizon, Mr. Chaplin reached out to Verizon in advance, and we're always told it's somebody else's fault. Well, after two and a half years, I, I, my patience has run out on it, and, um, I, I think, you know, they, they should be notified, but I'd, I'd like to see some sort of discussion on that. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair? Thank you. Could I just add something to that?
Mr. Poehler?
So, uh, it was about a week or a week and a half ago that one of the other companies changed its equipment. I'd written them, they got back, they said they had changed it. I've been, wrote back at the end of last week, asking, all right, who's next? I have not heard back. It's always very slow. I just want to say that I think one of the reasons you may have seen a difference here is one of the companies did make some progress. So, uh, yes, it's been a ridiculous ongoing problem. This particular poll never made it to the official list, and I think that's one of the reasons that it's taken so long, but, um, I will continue to work on that, and I would say the board should too.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Diggins, any other business?
My request, the, for, um, next agenda, I mean, I think we talked about it, you know, a, a few weeks ago, you know, is, um, I'm going to do that rewrite, you know, the parking policy for overnight, so let's try to have that discussion, and maybe I can weave in some things that Mr. Hurd brought up, you know? It'll be the rewrite. It'll be the first time that you all will see it, I mean, but hopefully, you know, we can get far enough, I mean, that we can make a decision, and I may need to do some more revisions, but if we make a decision and it's a go, then we can start working, you know, to, you know, roll this thing out if you get into July. And, um, and then I'll just add, you know, one of the things, I know that sometimes the differences amongst us seem great, but we're really all on the same page, I mean, it's like, this is a really good town, me, 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 and so, just keep that in mind as we, you know, sometimes get a little tense about things. I mean, we are much more in agreement about the, the big things, you know, than we are in, in disagreement, so, so, you know, that's all, you know, so, thanks.
Thank you, sir. And I have no new business, other than to wish everybody, uh, in the spirit, perhaps, of Mr. Diggins' remarks, a productive, constructive town meeting session. Do we have a motion to adjourn tonight's session?
Second.
And discussion? A motion by Mr. DeCoursey, second by Mr. Diggins. All in favor? Aye. Post, adjourn, see you tomorrow.